We'll open. Pledge. Yeah. Open the called ordered meeting of the Finance Committee for April 26th and the seat to the Board of Selectmen.
I think Board of Selectmen also, we guys who have joint meeting.
For the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. First, I welcome our two newest members for the Finance Committee. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you.
Jump right in. Right in with the Board of Selectmen's.
One for down and whatever is on the agenda, Mr. Chairman?
That's fine.
Okay. Going to town council budget?
I think we missed the town meeting budget. It's not listed, but that should be covered by Board of Selectmen, correct?
This will make sure it's on.
Town meeting?
Yeah.
Is under town clerk? Okay, thank you. So we are going to 151.
No, you got to get the Board of Selectmen first.
Oh, just straight Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, they have their own. Right?
22. Yeah.
What are you going to?
Yeah, 122 would be the Board of Selectmen's primary.
Would be their.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Year of the last, pretty much, the board of, the Board of Selectmen has, Board of Selectmen has been, have entered into, has entered into contract agreements with the executive assistant and the administrative assistant. The administrative assistant contract reflects the typical, the tip of, the two percent, the two and a half percent increase that has been applied to the clerical union this year. The executive assistant contract is actually based on a restructured job description with the executive assistant. That, that position with the retirement of the prior treasure, treasure, treasure collector and also based on recommendations from our independent auditor. The updated job description in salary act, act, act now includes the executive assistant getting much more human resource responsibilities. So she would be managing the FMLA process for the town employees, the 111F, the 111F benefit administration, the workers' comp administration and the unemployment program as well. So those, so the updated job description, updated job description and contract that had been put in place on that reflects those added responsibilities.
Does that also include then, since it's majority of HR related items, would that also include the town's ADA coordinator role?
No, the ADA, the ADA roles, the ADA roles act more than employment detail. Oh, you know, like it's, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, oh, like, oh, it's dealing with slopes and building aggressive issues. You know, like a lot of the work that we, you know, like have done in the, both the interior and exterior town buildings. So it's more, so the ADA coordinator more is more on top of the same than the HR.
Yes, I guess my question more because in the past, we've always talked about how Jim is effectively the coordinator in those regards. And someone in the town administration would be for the payroll related side of things or the employee related side of things. So is that also in her new job description?
The ADA portion?
Yeah, for, for employee HR related.
If we hired somebody who needed a ramp, yeah, ramp access to a building.
Type of employee work combinations, yes.
She would, this person's going to handle that.
So yes, to her and I, like I am the town equal employment, I'm the town's equal employment officer as well. So yeah, like, so yeah, her, so her and I would share that responsibility.
Okay. Any other questions on the Selectmen's budget?
Where are we moving the passport stipend?
It's all to water.
Where are we moving the passport stipend?
The passport stipend has actually been active for the last two, two and a half years because of COVID. But the, but the need, but the need has act, the need has actually sent, the need has actually since not come back. And it hasn't actually been brought up by, by the library as well, who we have shared that responsibility with in the past.
Is the library taking care of that right now entirely or no one's doing it?
No, no, like it's not a function that we're providing, not a function that we're providing to town at the moment.
Okay. Any other questions on? Go to 151. Council?
You, 151, the Selectmen budget, can we deal with the town administrative budget as well?
Sure.
Absolutely. Is that, is that, that sum is not, I, oh yeah, no, I'm sorry. It's mentioned. Yeah, like at the end of the meeting, if we can wait until at the end of the meeting, so we can save the best for last.
Sure.
So we do, yeah, we'll stick to the order here then. Town council 151. This, this is, this is the level funding budget. We have, in FY22, we've had a number of more significant issues which we had to rely on that budget more than we did in FY21. Can also just really going into, so going into FY23, there are something, some issues also looming where, oh, you know, there, there might be the need to even, oh, you know, go back at the fall time meeting and oh, you know, like, oh, like actually examine how the, the current proposed appropriation is actually, is actually faring up based on those outside issues that may exist right now.
Do you would expect to come to light before special?
Not possibly.
Any questions on? Questions on that? Okay. Processing. 55.
The biggest, the biggest, I biggest increase we're actually proposing here, is the need like assesses the computer fees budget for, for, for a subscription for a GIS system called NAMAP. We actually, it was proposed a part of the capital outlay process, but the committee decided, you know, and felt that the operational budget was a better place for the request. But the technology wouldn't, the technology wouldn't only be used by the assessor's office. It could interact and also interact with the online planning software that the bill, that the building commissioner has introduced. Our, our software could be shared and used by the assessor's office, the building department, the highway department, the planning board, the conservation commission. So, so for $5,000, it is actually a really worthwhile investment. Oh, you know, like in, oh, in terms of appraising, in terms of land use issues, like it has a multitude of benefits.
So it's not just an assessor, it's really spread out amongst?
Yes. So yeah, but the request that, the request was made through the assessors. Their computer fee line, I don't know. So that's why they're not there.
Also include, I know the historical society, there was a fee for GIS, something to do with the GIS software. Does that encompass theirs as well or?
That, that is included in the historical budget.
Okay.
So yeah, like that is, so this, so the NAMAP isn't exactly a GIS program.
Okay.
It's, so Jim, how would you actually explain the, the NAMAP?
It is. What it does is it actually allows us to use historic aerial as well as real time. The files are six months apart. So the nice thing about this is we have good solid data that tells us what's on the ground. The other thing is the, the quality of the pictures is exceptional. Far beyond what we have right now. So you can actually capture the wetland areas. It uses lidar technology to see the different topography. So it's just, it's a state of the art program and it will integrate with my software program, which is what we were. Historical Society is a nonprofit, independent group. One might happen to be a president, so I hope that you want to be linked up with.
GIF. And this is software?
Yes.
Okay. So it's subscription?
It's a subscription based.
It's web based. It's web based.
Any other questions?
I have one question. Does that have a recurring fee as well, monthly, annually, or annually?
It's, if that's why capital outlay recommended it go to the operating budget?
Yep.
Is that going to be a, I'm sorry, is that going to be the same $5,000 going forward annually or is it going to be?
Yeah, then one thing you said, pretty sad for us.
Okay.
At some point it could go up though. I mean, that does, you know, but yeah.
Other questions on that section? We'll move over to that building insurance. Do we want to hold that mic or do we want to jump to that?
So I would recommend actually holding it for now. We're going to have hopefully some really good information by the press part of next week. We might be able to, we were planning to realize some, some savings there.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we'll hold that one till next week then. Reports. 195.
Slight increase, Mr. Chairman, and then the committee. Based on the types of groups and the comprehensiveness of the reports that we've been receiving. That has, that has involved more paper, which means more printing. So it is a slight increase there.
See when that's all spent at the end of the year, town for the annual.
It's, so what?
Spending.
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't spent any this year. That's because?
Yeah, like because we're having the book printed out, senior town report printed out. So, so we're going to expand that all in one month. But, so you'll see the FY21 expenditures were just over, were just over. So actually we needed a year in transfer. So with the additional, you know, $160, we have the room to be able to to deal with the whole class stuff.
Questions on the town reports?
Just looking at the, the math on that for the proposed increase. Am I missing it? Says $200 proposed increase.
That's what the increase is.
Okay, is the first one blanked out? Is that what it is?
So the, the last year's budget?
22.
Yeah, print $200 all the way down.
Okay, right here. Two, two, two. It's two?
That's a variance. Yeah, that's the variance. There's no variance in here. That's, that's what that's saying.
So that's not the increase like we usually show it?
All right, this is, this is your increase here.
Yeah, well, two, four, six.
No, 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 these are total lines. But they're bolded.
All right, well, I'm missing everything else.
No, no, there is nothing else. This is the only line item in here.
Okay.
This is the one line item in this place.
Okay, I see it. It's my glasses. I'm good. I'll get another check.
Hold, hold liability insurance also. Settlements of 940.
There's nothing there.
Yeah, nothing. Yeah, good point.
Let's keep it that way.
Yeah.
Yes.
Perfect. Judgment, same thing, no, nothing. Good. Tuition, 920?
Yep.
Based on oh, the, so the variable in this to recount is based on the fact that some years are higher. Some years are lower in terms of the expenditures, but it's actually like a contractually, so again, so in the number of union contracts, the benefit is, the benefit is a contractually required or negotiated benefit. That being said, the classes, oh, you know, even, even though we ask our departments and employees to, to plan in advance, we make that a priority. There are some instances when an employee, a union employee especially, they go to take a course. Oh, you know, like we, we are required under the CBA to pay flows. So that's why the ebb and flow in, oh, you know, like and we see an ebb and flow when the incentive, uh, budget's expended and it's, you know, I so yeah, like I mean, so last year we started off the budget process with, with a request of $16,000. You know, the think, um, you know, team, I, they recommended, I think, a more practical number. And with that practical number through the end of March, we've only spent about, we spent 50% of that budget. So.
When does the, from the contract, do we pay when the cost is incurred or do we pay after they've completed and passed a course?
So it depends on the, it actually depends on the contract.
Okay.
Which we're trying to make that our uniform, so for, for a second. We get into a more predictable and planable number.
Are you negotiating then for that to be upon passing the course that will reimburse? As opposed to we're just going to pay for it regardless?
I, yes, but those, I mean, we have like a few active processes ongoing now. So I really didn't what we're trying to do with those processes at this point. So I, so I actually, so I actually thought the same thing, Lenny.
Yes.
So I wouldn't actually be able to confirm that like until I go through the meeting minutes. I don't have them with me, but yeah, so. So I thought the, so I was under the, so I was under the understanding that the, the Selectmen on this, they, they took the time and made a recommendation, but I could be wrong.
Is the department request would come from the Board of Selectmen on this?
So, so at the initial level, and then would I, you know, so, so the initial request would have, would have actually came from the town administrator and then with updated information of looking at the trend. Oh, you know, like of, through, like and actually would have been earlier, pre the end of March, I would have looked at the trend and and that is why I would have made that reduction at that point.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. So maybe this one we'll hold also and you guys can review the minutes and just know.
Yeah, that's fine. Sorry about the confusion there.
Does anyone else have any questions on that before we move on? We will move on to the chief. Good, how are you? Yep, yep, 210.
So.
You guys pretty quiet up there.
Oh, where do we start? Well, we see that you brought the LT in for backup, so. Right. So. Obviously, the first question is on the chief line, which is when do we expect to have a new contract hammered out? Yeah, it says that his contract is.
Oh, update that. It's by, yeah, there's already a successor contract.
Okay.
For the chief police. The, the number has the if the figure, the budget, and now the figure in the budget reflects the updated number. We just didn't update the note.
Okay.
But there is a, Jesus. Okay. So, but we, but we have negotiated a successor contract with the chief police that is through the end of August 2022. So like, so like it's a two month successor contract that, that would take the chief through to his retirement.
So that number that is annualized based on that?
Yes.
Okay.
So because we have, we have, we, we, we have started the recruitment search process for a successor.
Next line is, represents the increase of almost $39,000, $38,000 change. Let's see, the note says shift differentials. Is that all shift differentials plus the standard, whatever the contract?
About the full timeline?
Yep, yep.
All right, that full timeline is to do with the, the full time guys, because they signed a new contract.
So there is a new, yeah, how long is this new, is this new contract for?
Three years. Just signed up.
Okay. During this year?
Yeah, and the first year was funded by the town meeting.
Yeah.
So then, both the school resource officer and the lieutenant are 6% and 5% increases. Just elaborate on the amount, the significance of the, the amount. Typically, it's, you know, somewhere in that 2% to 3% range. Now we're at 5 and 6.
I believe that is to do with, I may have been wrong, but I thought that was to do with his salary plus his stipend that he does the say, so you know, that he got a percent of that. So he's, he's getting a percent of doing that.
The, the SOE position, like in the bargaining with the police union, the SOE position was a 37 and a third, 37 and a third hour a week position, like in the bargaining based on the unique kid nature and the position, the need to follow the, uh, the need to follow the school week. We moved that, so from a 37 and a third hour a week position to a 40 hour a week position. So that had an, that had an additional cost that was over and above the the, uh, 2%.
Okay, so that accounts for that and then on the lieutenant's salary?
The lieutenant, as the chief had mentioned, this is where with the transition over, with the transition over into the lieutenant position, the lieutenant for the last at least 15 years has been, has been the technology software person for the department. Like in the, like in the increase there, it represents, the increase there represents a transition plan that we worked out between the lieutenant and the police union. And that basically he, he, he for the next, he for the next two years was going to receive, so is going, so it's going to be weaning off, it's going to be weaning off, it's going to be weaning off stipend as, so as, as a stipend is increased for the new software person who's a, who's a union person. uh, 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 for the new software person who's a, who's a union person in the department. So as he's weaning, so as a lieutenant is weaning off, like in training, uh, uh, the new software person, new software person in the department, uh, 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 he is gonna shed those responsibilities. Uh, but we didn't, uh, we felt that it was best, we felt that it was best not to do it all at once, because we needed some continuity there. So that is the increase in the funding there.
And the second year, he'll receive a percentage and, uh, it drops off, yeah.
Question. So the stipend will drop off from the lieutenant, and a new technology person will assume a new position?
Uh, so the, uh, 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 so in the department, there's, so in the, in the department, there's always been like a software stipend for, oh, like a union employee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, uh, so, uh, so, uh, so that union employee was just brought into the role. Uh, so based, based on that, and, based on that employee's, based on that employee's knowledge, so that employee's knowledge of the system, oh, you know, like, based on that employee's knowledge of the system, we wanted some continuity there, so we split the stipend in half. So fifty-fifty in year one, um, I believe it was, I think seventy-thirty in year two, with the seventy percent being absorbed, oh, you know, like you're ac, oh, you're actually being earned by the union stipend. Uh, so.
Question.
So as lieutenant would basically shed those responsibilities.
So lieutenant's not in the union right now. But what's gonna happen in here is he is so-called.
The union wants to keep his position.
Yeah, his union position, but he's trained, setting this union member up to do this job, because we just didn't wanna take it away from lieutenant, who's been doing it for seven years now when we first got this, this software, and just, and.
Was this newly, was this newly negotiated, that it's going to be a union person?
What happened was, when the transition occurred, it was recognized that if, if those tasks and those responsibilities, there were multiple, multiple systems to the states that would go unmaintained.
Okay.
So we had a conversation, figured out kind of a share. It was a transition, it wasn't just a part of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
So what he said with that?
So, so then, let me see if I understand this then. We have, uh, essentially for the lieutenant, we have a five percent increase. Two per, two percent, eh, two, two and a half, whatever, is the typical increase. The other two, two and a half is to cover these additional responsibilities, three, okay? So next year, when you scale down, do we scale down your increase here? So that next year, for example, if all you do is your standard two percent, does that just become one percent? Or, and then the next year, it goes to, we, we make up the difference there again, that's, uh, that's, you know?
Yeah, eventually it drops off.
It drops off, well, it drops off for the, the additional, yeah, the additional, so two, so next year, you get two percent plus one percent, and then the year after, you just get a standard two percent, right?
Yeah.
Okay, my, my, my. My concern is this. That additional two percent is a stipend amount and is therefore not considered part of a salary, okay? So a stipend amount basically is the amount that you're getting, as long as you're doing that job. If no longer you're gonna be doing that job, we should be pulling that stipend amount away from the total amount that is being received, so, okay?
I, I track everything. Stipend percent. We don't really use stipend.
Well, I was coming.
Really, if, if a year from now, there was a different lieutenant, that salary would not include the stipend. So I just think, Robert, pretty much, should that be included in a different line, or?
You know, yeah, that's, 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 because, you know, I look down at some additional lines, like we have the educational incentive for the chief and the lieutenant. You know, is this stipend, should the stipend be for a, um, a technology officer? Just call it a technology officer, and in this year, the lieutenant's gonna get seventy percent of that stipend, stipend. And the union person's gonna get thirty percent, and then the following year, lieutenant gets thirty percent, and the union person gets seventy, and then the following year, it's just the union person.
No, and, so I, so I agree with the principle, so I agree with the principle and what you're mentioning. But, uh, but also, so, 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 yes, and for this, so for this point, non, so. In a non-union position, I agree with the principle in doing that. Uh, after it, so it, once it, once it goes fully back to, oh, you know, that role being within the union, uh, like I, so I just wanna mention, within the union, there are different roles that, I mean, so, so I mean, it's semantics, but there are different, uh, kinds of roles with so-called stipends. So like, in following that logic, we could have, uh, actually an additional, uh, four or five lines. Uh, one for scheduling, uh, one for software.
These two guys do LTC, so like a two and a half.
So just keep, keep it, keep it a single line and just call it, uh, um, uh, job, jobs, or, or role-specific stipends, or something to that effect.
For all of them?
For all of them, and that way, we just budget for all of them separately, and then that way, everybody, everybody just goes into that.
Because the pay is, you know, the, the pay, the stipend.
It is not very transparent on these stipends, how much those stipends are and where they're going directly. I mean, it's buried in, it looks more like a, like your pay, your, uh.
It is built in.
It's included, yeah, I mean, right.
Right, so the challenge would be, if you keep with that terminology of stipend, you think it's a set amount. It's really not, it's based on the officer that assumes the role, because everybody's base is different, so it's. It's not a set amount per set.
All of that is part of the negotiated contract.
Yes.
I've got one more question. I guess it is deceiving in some points for anyone who looks at this, um, looking at the lieutenant, it's listed as your salary. But your salary is different, uh, set aside from your stipend payments.
No.
I, well, not at this point, it's not because your stipend is included as part of your salary. But the thing is, once you stop that, stop this stipend work, then your salary should either stay the same or go down a little bit.
It would.
It would down.
But that doesn't make sense on a budget, not knowing the background of it, not knowing what either, you either, somebody looking at would think you either lost hours, or you've changed, or the role has been changed. It, it's just not very transparent or clear, where the dollars going.
The role is changing.
Yeah. It can, and that's the challenge with it, because right now, we have certain people that are designated to do these extra tasks. That could change at any point, so that percentage follows the person, doesn't follow, it, it's not one set amount. Because everybody gets different years off, different years of service. Um, education plays into it, so it's always gonna move, depending on who is. CBA.
Thank you.
Uh, vacation and sick buyback, would that be majority?
Yes.
One or two people?
One, one. Um, originally.
And, and more, I'm sorry, Mike.
So why the number was higher, um, so at the outset was initially, um, we, uh, we were envisioning perhaps a possibility of more than one, um, but, uh, as we evolved and the, the budget prices evolved, uh, that, um, that buyback is for one.
Okay.
And also, in their contract, it can buy, anybody can. They wanna buy back the week they can, so.
On the, um, overtime for the full-time officers, we see a six percent increase. And, and, I mean, that just tells me that there's a, two percent of that is gonna be the additional salary or pay, right? Because we have typical two percent increase in, in pay. So that means we're having, seeing a four percent increase in, in additional overtime hours, roughly. Yeah, I see for this year, for three-quarters of the year, we're only at sixty-two percent of our usage. So might we be better off just using a level funding number plus two percent?
I think last year, in the last quarter of the year, my memory is right, I think we only spent around twenty percent of that budget.
Yeah.
So we still came in, lower in the last quarter than expected.
Right.
May and June are, it's just a lot of time to use before fiscal. This year, we've actually taken on three lateral transfers, um, so they have some extra time. So I think it's gonna be close, I think it's gonna be really close by the end of fiscal.
Yeah, they picked up, the, the three new ones, one's got fifteen days, they got, and the other two got, uh. Overtime, we, we don't know what additional overtime and things.
Comp time used to be filled, reserve officers, and that was negotiated to get first appeals for patrol. So that's, that number is back into that as well, it's no, it's no longer a reserve filling comp.
That's part of the contract?
Yeah, that's overtime, and then bereavement. If, if the guys have to go. Uh, no, it's now full-time, it's all right.
The other challenge is the training requirements through police reform and post. That's increased at least two-fold, as far as the responsibilities, the obligations for everybody to go through mandatory minimum training. And we always try to get a seat there.
And that, and that's in-house training and training outside.
We have officers of bomb stability, officers Randolph next week. In two weeks, they'll be in Plymouth, it's, it's all part of reform, it's all part of what we're mandated to do now.
The, the reserves are level, would you, you're not expecting a decrease in that with the, with the, uh, new contract?
Is they're obligated to go through, uh, exponential more training? Officer, which according to the state, no longer exists, but they're gonna give everybody five years to work up to a full-time academy certification. So, um, I'm actually kinda interested to see how.
Not to get off topic, but what is a lateral transfer?
A full-time officer that was working for another department, full-time capacity, that transferred.
Was that a mom?
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's the recommended one.
Yeah, right.
That's the case. Yeah, is that how you fill, yeah, in all of the positions?
No, right there.
Lateral transfer last year? Oh, yeah.
This is the recommendation.
No.
Yeah, what I'm saying, yeah. Right?
Yeah, that was last year.
That's a T A.
Right, that's. More on that.
One fifty-seven. Educational incentives for the chief and the LT. Three times as much as last year, to begin with, the request. So I guess my first question is, is with the chief retiring, two months into the fiscal year, and we don't know who the replacement is yet, are those same incentives going to be available to the new chief? Secondly, what exactly are these incentives? And, and then thirdly, and I think this goes back to the board of selectmen and the town administrator, your recommendations over in the right-hand column are, match the increase as opposed to the requested amount? I'll, I'll allow the chief and the lieutenant to speak.
The incentives is, you know, is me and Ted. That's what that is right there.
See, but what's the incentive for, I mean?
It's, 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 um, schooling, he, he has a bachelor's degree.
Yep.
I have associates, so you get so much for having associates, you get so much for having a bachelor's. So that's, that is, so.
One-one-one oh eight L, national law, it's the Police Career Incentive Pay Program. So it outlines the program, if the town adopts it, to incentivize officers for having certain levels of education. Uh, even though the towns and cities can present a factor of twenty-five for masses.
Thank you. Um, so then I'll ask this of the town administrator then, so this is an annualized budget for the chief as well, on this line item as well. So we're.
The chief having a bachelor's, correct?
No, no.
Associates, coaches, I'm sorry, yes.
Right.
So that.
So that, this line item could go up if the new chief has a bachelor's or a master's.
It could go a lot, it could go high.
That'd be, uh, since, sorry.
Said, don't retire.
Yes. Yes, I do.
So, yeah, but there could be, uh, there could be some contingencies within the personnel budget, especially the chief line too, depending on how that shakes out, I mean, so to absorb those, um, they, like, any shifts there, but it's, so, but it's too early to tell.
Can you just tell me what the communication allowance is for?
That's for, um, cell phones, the, the union and the contract, that they get a percentage of it, they get paid for their cell phones.
Yep, okay, that's all contract related, yeah. In the professional and technical, that, that decrease for the request versus the, is that just, uh, just a level fund to last year?
Thirty-seven grand, I mean.
Yes.
Yes.
That, um, that account, more of it's been moved to other, other departments, or?
The, the. so, so, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question. So was more, so the, so the difference in the $3,000 that what was proposed and what was recommended, did that go to other departments or?
So we've spent 41 so far this year.
I think just historically, that has always come out of that line. So we're trying to keep true to that to get kind of an idea of where we're gonna be. This was kind of a bolus year with a lot of this stuff. As far as obligations, because a lot of the officers are doing, um, everything they to kind of alleviate next year's lacking of officers trying to get into all these programs. So that's typically where we've always taken it from, right, chief?
Yeah, and also, we also sent two people to the full-time police academy. And send person there is like $3,900. The funds that we have to purchase and anything else we have to give them. So we sent two people there. So that, that's basically a professional tech academy's training, uh, all that stuff. That's what we take it out of. That's basically other things too.
Um, 5480 vehicular supplies. We're at 15,000. We're asking for a $2,000 increase, yet we've only spent 30% of our budget to date. Is this some line item that we can level fund at the 15,000?
It's been difficult.
Sorry, vehicle repairs.
No, this is supplies. This is supplies, uh, 5480.
Yeah, the one 3,000 there?
Uh, $2,000 increase. Both from the bottom, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
We told him he sat, okay. Cause I'm surprised you felt it.
I, yeah, I do believe that officers.
Yeah, that's exactly what you'd say. Yeah, like the additional maintenance.
Yeah, so I, I think the fear is completely getting all the parts are more expensive, uh, so. Cars, I mean, unfortunately, I've had my own personal issues trying to get my car fixed. But I believe that's where it is. It's trying to plan first. Vehicle supply.
No, about, you're talking about other.
Vehicle supply.
Vehicle supply.
Vehicle supplies.
Yeah, it's, it's repairs, maintenance, just supplies.
We have, okay. 5240 is, is equipment repair and maintenance. We're not putting vehicle repairs under there. Vehicle repairs are falling under vehicle supplies.
That's my understanding of that, I guess.
Okay, yes. All right.
Would be equipment repairs then, communications equipment?
There'd be anything in, in house. Working hardware, computers, hard drives, we've had three hard drives crash this year. Anything internal that needs to get fixed or replaced.
Last question I have for you, uh, we're guess, guess, we're already at 90% of the budget through, through March. How was, how was April been?
Um, that was actually just done yesterday, so.
So that's why, so the updated recommendation, um, from the Town Administrator and the board, um, and the board, uh, and the selectmen, uh, that, that since we made the, uh, since the initial request were made, we added $2,000 in there to give, to provide some additional room there.
Seemably you could push past 27 this year, I would assume.
So, no.
Yeah, it's hard to see.
Any other questions on that, please?
I ask one question.
Yeah.
I, I just wanna, uh, get up to date. How many full-time officers we have and how many, uh, part-time?
We have 15 full-time.
Yeah. Reserve? Four now.
No other questions, we'll move on to communications.
Let me put this in order.
It was.
Take credit for it. Are you on communications with that?
Communications, yes.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's what I'm funding right now. They, they don't even have a contract right now. They've been out with a contract for two years now. They're in process of changing unions. They had, they dropped. Now they have to have some type of paper signed by somebody to enter another union that they're looking into. Sorry, 16. I didn't count myself.
Really? He's already in retirement, though.
It's good to go already in retirement, yeah. It would be like a GPS, you get old.
So, um, there's some notes over on the right-hand side that says, you know, it says, I don't, it looks like they've been.
He's old, I'm sorry. Yeah. He's a, you're more than years old.
Okay, so, so my, my question is, then goes to the, um, uniform allowance, which we see it being almost doubled. If we didn't have any increase in staff and there's no contract out, why are we having to double our uniform allowance? Uh, 5153, the uniform part-time for the part-timers.
Uh, because part-timers get a, um, do get a co-al allowance and they get supposed to get a pair of pants and a shirt for, for, so that's, that's part-time, that's not full-time. That's probably why that number's high there.
From three part-time dispatchers to six.
Six, yeah.
Okay, that's something I need to know right there. And then answer the question.
Yeah.
We need the mid, mid words here.
Any other questions on communications? We'll move on to animal control. 292. Like, I don't know if you want to mention, um, the, the, the first part is the salary, personnel expense part of this increase?
Uh, yes, so, um, what, um, so with the last, uh, 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 last few months, what has, what has actually, what's actually came to light is the fact that based on the hours that the, that the ECO has been working in recent years. Uh, so if you take the hours she's actually working, I'm gonna divide that out to, uh, to, uh, to the salary that she's been earning. Like, I, up in, uh, up until now, um, at a rate of about $25,000 a year. Uh, with, uh, the $22,000 of it being in this budget, um, and approximately about another $3,000 in the board health budget. Uh, the ECO has been making less than minimum wage. Uh, so we, uh, uh, like, over the last, over the last, over the last few months, we've been work, uh, like, actually working with the ECO and the Police Department Administration. Uh, and we have done comps. Uh, uh, we have comps, um, and we have comps from the town of Hobart, the town of Rainham and others that actually when you look, um, at the comps from, uh, the town of Hobart, just as an example. Uh, like our current date, our current ECO for the hours that she's working now, uh, she's only, uh, she's only making, uh, like approximately $6,000 more dollars in the part-time ECO in Hobart. So based on the information, uh, that we provided, uh, so like we wanted to, in this budget process, uh, tried to address, uh, you, uh, you know, the issue, the disparity that exists, uh, like, in the ECO's salary at this point.
Hours typically in a week. And the removal of the assistant, that's one of the reasons that was there in the past was for vacations. You end up having to reciprocate? Communications, would that be?
This is communication as the ECO, so that line will reflect, um, she has her own town phone now.
Okay. Any other questions on the animal control?
No.
Thank you.
I've got one more. You have communications allowance and a communications. What's the difference?
The allowance should be zero.
Yep, there's no requests.
Okay, thank you.
Harbor Master, 295.
So just, I just feel like kick off. One of the questions that existed, um, uh, and still exists at the beginning of the budget, um, is the, uh, uh, is a distinguishing of, of, I think, what, uh, what, um, what the harbor master's rate of pay should have been, um, uh, the last few, the last two years, uh, the last two years, uh, so there were other employees. So regular full-time employees got at least a 2% increase, um, but we never as a town defined anything, um, for stipend employees. So that's where, um, a lot of, a lot of the discussion, um, has centered in the last few weeks with the harbor master. And whether, how we basically, how we, uh, how we look at, uh, how we look at percentage increases for stipended employees. Uh, do they get, uh, do they get stipends? Do they not? Um, and that is frankly still a question, uh, that's out there, um, that we need to solve, um, in addressing this budget process.
Not to speak for the entire committee, but just, just for myself, I know my personal opinion for the last five years, we've, we've frozen all stipend increases. And, you know, that includes everyone up here who also ends up working for less than minimum wage, so. That's just my personal opinion, but. But we can go through the rest of it and, uh.
And, and that was, you know, my, my understanding is two to three years ago that this was on, put on the board of selectmen, did come up with a, a policy. And, which was a re, one of the reasons for the freeze as well, until we came up with a policy, then we're gonna be frozen. Now we couldn't, we can't freeze employees, you know? But the stipends, we could, and that's what we did. So, um, until there's a policy that is established, if we were to, maybe, I would say this, if we were to consider stipend increases, it'd be at roughly the same rate that we're giving our employees, which has typically been in that 2% range, not 6% that's been requested in this situation.
Understood.
Thank you. I might, yeah, just to add to that, then I would think that, you know, a poli, a policy for stipends then would be across the board, not just a department here, a department there.
Mr. Roach, um, at the last Board of Select meeting, we took this budget under advisement.
I, I should have.
Had this discussion with other budgets, the pa, um, that have come in and asked us to make up. And we were pretty insistent and saying, no. So you'll notice that there are some significant increases in a couple of the line items. And we felt we needed more time and we as the board because we too have some concerns.
I, I should mention that there are a few departments that the Board of Selectmen hasn't made a recommendation on, and they're gonna be making more recommendations tomorrow, and this happens to be one of them.
That's great.
But, but I'd like to hear from our harbor master on those line items that specifically are, um, have the increases. So equipment repairs and maintenance is an increase of $5,000. I'm assuming that's a one-time only, going to occur in FY '23 for a specific incident? What is it? Something with the boat, probably, right?
Yeah, that's definitely.
Okay.
The maintenance cost to a town on massive.
Okay. Thank you. And then the professional and technical, an increase of $1,000?
Awesome. Harbor master has worked, working with the chief. It's, uh, an educational that the police department, who are possibly the environmental police, can share with us along to better, uh, handle infraction for safety stock for whatever reason. So what we've tried to do is incorporate a sum of money reflective of a, uh, law enforcement officers to educate us, better educate us on how to avoid and minimize so that we don't have a situation. They do it every day, all day, including the environmental police. Law enforcement is part of Harbor Master's responsibility and the Massachusetts general law. Law enforcement is part of the harbor master's responsibility and the Massachusetts general law. Situations. So what we've tried to do is put together a sum of money. Then we'll pursue it further with the chief, with the lieutenant, with the environmental.
And so we see this as being a, a recurring expense, an annual, an annual expense as opposed to a one-time? Okay.
Yeah, as a continuing education. By us having that information.
You guys have even taken it this far, but would that be something that you guys go to the police station and they educate you there, train you there?
It could be, um, what I suggested was we do, um, I suggested so do four hours or whatever in class, whether if you have a police station whoever is able to help us. And then go to the water, and we practice what we just learned. That's, we do a lot of continuing Those are always run half-day in class, half-day on the water. So you learn when these professionals brought in, then you go out as a group and you practice what you just learned. We, from a law enforcement perspective.
Not to ask a stupid question, but the, the accounting of that then, is, is that just like a highway detail? Does the salary move over to?
Master budget?
Yeah.
Charge of police detail, um, like the highway charge is a police detail. So in that place, there's a separate line item for that.
Okay.
Question. How many hours would you say we spend on the, um, water a year? Just rough? 10, 20, 30, 100? So I guess my dilemma's always been fuel costs, $131, $227. Does the boat idle a lot? Or does it not run a lot?
It does idle a lot, uh, depends. It depends on the boating climate. If there's no activity out there, we don't just go out and ride around that island.
Right, right.
Um, you won't see some of the costs yet because we save, I try to save dues in our seasonal budget.
Right.
For January to June, because I don't know what's going to happen.
Right.
And we don't have a lot of money, it's not a lot of money. So if something were to happen, I spent all that money in September, October, November.
Right.
I'm out of money for the remainder of the year, so.
Yeah.
The boat is extremely efficient.
Yeah, five or six gallons an hour?
Uh, less than that.
Less than that?
Four-stroke, yeah. It's a government-issued four-stroke.
All right.
The average person cannot just go into a dealership and buy.
Yeah. The, the reason I ask is because in '20, it was $227, and in '21 it was $131. For 100 hours on the water, that seems pretty low.
Those have to be incorrect.
Okay, yeah, because it doesn't seem like you could possibly do $100 on the water for $131.
Twenty gallons.
Right.
So we filled up twice last year.
Okay.
Alex filled up another.
Yeah, I was wondering if that gas is coming from somewhere else. I don't know. I don't know my.
It does not reflect.
Yeah.
Fairly soon, as soon as the pumps open, we have a ton to yank.
I would expect what you're looking for, for the budget, you'd pretty much be going through, I would think.
Well, it's probably going to be over five bucks a gallon.
Right.
So that's two fillers between now and June 30th.
Right.
That'll be gone.
So just a point of clarification, um, uh, the FY21, um, for the FY21 gas budget.
Yes.
Um, the, um, so there's an unpaid bill that is actually coming, um, forward, um, at the ECO town meeting.
For fuel?
For fuel.
So, let's say, I'm thinking '20 as well?
Special, it's a special.
I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
All right. That would be a part of special, right? Not annual?
We, uh, we had a discussion with DOR about that today, and we were allowed to do that at the, oh, at a annual, so we can do it on the one.
All right, cool.
Yeah.
Well, for that.
Okay. Another question, and I'm not sure who to ask this to, but the balance in the, uh, fund that we have for the mooring fees and any of the other on water. Will that end up, is that where it would be at the end of the year, or is this time of year now is when we start collecting?
So we move, um, a portion of the boat excise that we collect.
Yeah.
To the, to the waterway fund, and that'll happen like at the beginning of the year, so at the beginning of FY23.
If we spent all of that, it would be replenished in July?
Yes.
So could we spend that towards the maintenance on, to the roughly 4,000 on the uh, maintenance on the boat?
I don't know, man, it's a good idea, isn't it? If something else unexpected should come up, then we would have that.
But if we spend.
But that's the, the revenues, so annual revenues that we should collect year over year, correct?
I believe we spent most, if not all of it, last year on repairs on the boat as well. Okay.
Two years ago.
Could I, um, address the stipends?
Sure.
About two or three or four meetings ago, before Mr. Karen was on the board, the board agreed to increase the stipends for everybody, uh, 2%, because we haven't given an increase for five years. We made one exception, that the board of selectmen would not get an increase in their stipends. So you'll see in future budgets, as we go through them, that we've asked for a 2% increase in the stipends. We did not address yet retroactive money, and I think we have some concern about going retroactive on stipends increases. But we did go through all the budgets and asked for an increase of 2% because for five years we haven't, uh, given an increase in stipends. And we wanted to show the volunteers, the people that join the commissions and committees, uh, that we appreciate their work. It's not a lot of money. I think we figured maybe it could be about $6,000 when you add it all up. I'm not sure if that figure, how accurate that figure is, but that's something that we took into consideration, that we haven't given an increase for five years.
Any other questions, uh, for the harbor master?
What's the question about detail, about? Where, where are you getting that? I don't see.
Just how would you charge back the training that your officer provides to the harbor master and the assistant? How would, how would the expense item, the expense monies come out of his budget and go back into yours? Right. As, as, and, and we were talking about using the detail line item as a place to put that in, put that in.
Yeah, it's curious as to the, the accounting of it, that's all.
Yes. Thank you.
Big timing because we're up to the town accountant. Yeah. 1, uh, 1:35? Now, before we start on yours, and this may not be, it may be more of a mic question, but where, um, do, do we know where we stand on the DOR review?
It's, uh, we just actually, um, that's a very good question. We received it this afternoon.
Oh, great.
Um, so, um, so upon receiving it, I did ask, I did ask DOR if they could come to one of the May selectmen's meetings, uh, so they could have the opportunity to present it to all of us, and we could all absorb it together, so.
Great.
I'm very excited by it.
For the new members, the DOR did a review of all the town's procedures and policies, and, um, it was fairly, I mean.
Financial practices, the need for financial policies, the need for forecasting, really did a deep dive.
Yeah, five, four or five months?
Yeah, yeah, since the beginning of December, so which was very well-needed.
All right. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, do you, what are we starting with, um, over budget with this proposal, do you know?
Mike, you have that number off the top of your head?
Uh, so what our excess levy capacity is with, um, so if we made some projections based on the departments that the board, uh, that, that the selectmen still had to weigh in on, um, but right now, we, only can we flip the process, uh, you know, to, uh, to start with a projection of what our excess levy, uh, what our excess levy capacity would be, um, if everything was approved. And, um, so, uh, just with my recommendations, because the, uh, the selectmen's budget is still underway, uh, but just with my recommendations, I, at a minimum, uh, would be, uh, would, we'd have an excess levy capacity in FY23 of 220, almost $224,000. Uh, 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 if, uh, if we kept the practice of, uh, the funding, the, uh, the debt, uh, for the police station at special term meeting, uh, that would bring us up to an excess levy capacity, um, over $590,000, uh, which would basically put us in the same, um, in the same fiscal position that we were back in FY2019. I mean, that, uh, so like, uh, so as I mentioned, uh, to the thing from at the prior meeting, one of the things, uh, that, uh, you know, we took a deep dive into our revenues, um, uh, you know, starting in November and continuing along, um, through January and February. Um, what act, um, what actually became clear, uh, was, uh, was that the local revenues, uh, the local receipt revenues that we've been relying on, uh, and the ambulance fund revenues that we've been relying on, uh, you know, weren't, uh, you know, really, and I'm all projected to be there, um, in FY23. So like we've had to have a little bit of a reset.
Growth numbers are never ready? No.
The what?
Growth numbers, are they being?
Yes, uh, there is a projected, uh, new growth number at $125,000, which is $163,000 less than last year. Uh, but I did check with the assessors office earlier this week, uh, like in what act, and what actually they're seeing, oh, you, I would, I would actually have realized new growth at this point, uh, is actually aligning with, yeah, 125, which, oh, you know, is very much causing us, I had to hit the brakes very quickly.
All right. I'm glad I asked.
In, in a couple of departments, we'll ask how the permitting's going.
Yeah.
The town council project run? Yeah, uh, so if I could just speak to the, uh, the 5105, um, so like when we went out to, uh, to hire, uh, uh, to hi, to hire a new town accountant last year, the market, um, is, uh, wasn't so as very, very competitive. Uh, so what we did is we structured, uh, the contract for the new town accountant. We structured the contract based on milestones. Uh, so, uh, the town accountant to be certified, uh, she has to be a town accountant for three years. Uh, but within those three years, she can take up to, what are the, three tests? It's a three exam?
Oh, well, to do.
The MCPPO?
Yes.
Uh, so, yeah, like a total, uh, so a total of three examinations, and we, uh, then we structured the contract, so we, we structured the contract that as she earned those examinations, uh, like, uh, she would be able to earn, she would be able to earn, she would be able to, she would be able to earn milestone, uh, incentives, if you will, for achieving, oh, you know, those milestones so early on in, uh, in her time with the town. So the, um, so, so the increase here, uh, Jack, she envisions her, um, uh, and we don't know yet if, oh, it'll happen, we hope it will, um, but envisions her reaching two of those milestones.
Yes, and this also too, just to add on to what Mike said, um, if you look in the FY22 budget column, the 78,232 was 83, and we transferred, I'm not sure if you guys remember, but we transferred five from that line, um, down to 5,300 to account for when we hired the consultant because of, there was a lag of when I started and then when he came in. Um, so the 5105 is just 2%, and then here, they have an annual school, they call it, whatever you hear, and you can sit for the exams one time. So I just figured I might as well take the two while I was there. Um, and that, the departmental request accounts for if I pass those two exams, which I don't find out, hopefully within like the next couple of weeks or so.
I think my only ask here is that, can we break this out into different line, line items like we did with the police department, for example, where you have the chief and the lieutenant, education incentives?
Well, mine are one-time. I, I like, I, once I pass it, I get.
So those go into the salary?
Those go into my salary, and then it's just a one-time. Only thing I get, um, annually is the education.
Right. I, I. The contract itself is public record, correct?
Yes.
So I think it would be helpful, um, for us just to see the breakdown then. Over, over, over on the right is just all, it's, it's just like, you know, how mu, how much is CMA certification getting you? How much is the education stipend getting you? Um, I don't have any problem with the fact that you're achieving your goals this early on in your career here in the town, so.
Yeah, no, we can.
But, but I just think in, for the sake of transparency, the townspeople.
Yeah, it's going to be the same with other departments as well, right? Certain people are going to earn education milestones and, or, or may.
Yeah, like this is really the only contract that we have that actually like really set up. Like it's really set up like this.
With incentives?
Yes.
Right.
So, I mean, it's real, oh, yeah, like it's really, it's really like a market condition. There was a similar community, uh, actually hiring a town accountant at the same time. Uh, you know, like, and we were going, uh, and we were going back and forth because the market, uh, is, oh, like, oh, like, oh, like, is virtually non-existent, frankly. Um, and, oh, oh, you, uh, like, and we, and we wanted to get to a place that was fair, uh, that actually had a very, a very comprehensive onboarding component as well, and, um, so that's how we ended up here. So.
Just because you don't have a computer, it's $3,000 per certification is two certifications, and then the education stipend of 1,200.
Okay.
So once I, if, hopefully if I do, or once I pass the exams, I'd get $3,000. There's a legal exam, and then there's a practical exam.
So 3,000 for each of those, and then?
Yes, so once I pass, it's just one time.
One payment, it's not added to your salary?
No, it is added to my salary.
It is?
It is.
Your CMA is certified municipal accountant, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I would have to, you know, continue, take continuing education courses, attend their annual school to pass or.
Right.
Okay.
How many credits are you required, I mean, just off the top of my head, what do they require?
So what they do is they actually do an experience base, um, you get a certain amount of points depending on whether you have how many years you've been either an assistant town.
That continues. That continuing that is in with professional and technical?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the annual conferences. They have one in like June, one in the fall, and that they have the annual. And to keep the. You have to attend this at least once every three years to keep.
Any questions on, for the town count?
No.
Good luck, Janelle.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I'm assuming the decrease in the professional technical is because of the.
Yes.
Yes.
Same consultant that we no longer need?
All right, we'll move on to primetime. Forty-two?
Yes, so in the, the council and aging budget should be.
Forty-one.
And, yeah.
It is, 541.
And it's in with Tom, who's here now too, so.
We can take both of those together, I would think.
Yeah.
Because there's some.
So, and Tom, you don't mind, do, Tom, Mr. Ferry? You don't mind if we do primetime and COA at the same time? Any both? We'll start with primetime?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman, and we sent out some, some background relating to a primetime reopening plan earlier today, that just like we had mastered, this budget, in the COA budget will be reviewed by the selectmen tomorrow night as well. But the, the, what we are, in what the council and aging board directors is proposing to do, going forward into FY 23, is to have the, the entire, the entire council and aging director's salary, like, actually all included, all included in the COA budget. Just in terms of the differences here, we, we have a longtime employee at the primetime who's retiring, like, at the first part of the fiscal year. So there is a buyback provision in the CBA, so the, the figure there, like, actually reflects the buyback that that employee is eligible for. We. Like, everything else there, like, as I mentioned, the COA director is, is 100% included in the COA budget. We do have for the union position, a, like, a two and a half percent, a two and a half percent cost of living adjustment based on the CBA as well. And we do also, out of the salary, like, in line item 5110, is, is also shared, is the split between both the COA and the primetime budgets. Based, of a big, so but based on the reopening plan, what we would envision based on this and based, so based on the analysis that the town, the council and I did, with the council and aging director, I can also with the prime, sorry, the council and aging board directors, like, uh, 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 because the primetime reopening plan, the primetime reopening plan visions are the operation of primetime three days a week rather than the five that we've been operating at. Additionally, we would move, like, almost all, almost all of the council and aging programming up to the primetime building as well. So the primetime, the primetime and the council and aging programming would share staff as well. But based on the three days a week operation, like, and based on the retained revenue that with an enrollment, with an enrollment of 20 clients, that, so we would work up and ramp up to a fee, we would be able, we would be able to have a, we would be able to have a retained revenue there, that after six months, especially at special time meeting, that we would aim to actually, we would aim to offset the, the, we would aim to offset at least, like, of the salary for the assistant manager, as currently budgeted in the amount of $55,000. We would, we would aim, with the retained revenue of revolving fund, to, to help cover that, to, to help cover part of that expense at first, and then as we go forward, ramp up, so actually ramp up to, oh, you know, to actually funding more of it through the revolving fund like we did up until a few years ago.
Primetime would, primetime's budget would still be a portion of services for in-town seniors and out-of-town seniors, just a matter of how we're looking at charging them.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 so one of the differences that the council and aging board of directors has recommended at this point is a higher, like, is a, is a higher out-of-town private pay grade for non-residents.
Has it been, and it would, I'm sure the board has had some feedback from seniors in town as to what they'd like to see?
Yeah, actually, we, we have a wing.
About a month ago, we had about. And we do have exactly 10 people right now. Well, we've only had past since then, and so there is a very good possibility that we can. About 20 people, absolutely. Some are else, partly Berkeley, but maybe, yeah.
I believe it's in your, your note from today, Mike, but I left this one on the printer. How, do you have a rough idea what you're, what you expect in-town versus out-of-town? And the reason I ask is because one of the things that personally I've always preferred is that if we're, the money that we're spending is for residents of Dayton and not too concerned with residents of Ton.
Right, so Dayton residents would be.
Thanks.
Don't always pick this facility.
Yes.
That's why we share other facilities and let some come here, because it's a better option in other towns.
Do you expect it to be 75-25, or not, no real way to?
It's gonna be a moving target, yes.
No.
You know that there's definitely, we do have a waiting list, and we have, we're, how so we get. Just along the services and program of the imam, that they have clients for us, but we've been closed for three years, which is not stopped.
We mentioned that other towns take in Dayton residents as well. Do other towns have a fee structure that's based on residency versus non-residency?
Supportive daycare that is trying. This core. Trying a new program, which is. From, to bring it down to three days, and, well, it's, it's fully, she has 20 clients per day.
That three-day model also explores here the two days a week for other elder needs in that facility, you know?
What's our capacity? If we're, if we have a waiting list of 10, we're targeting 20, what's the max number we can do in a day?
20.
20.
That's what it was.
So this is full capacity then? Summer once a day, once a week, what, summer two times a week? All right. Okay.
One question that I've got on the budget is in the professional and technical on council and aging. Twenty-nine.
Do I go with primetime?
Uh huh.
Okay. Yes, professional, do you increase there?
Yes.
That, that line was brought down due to COVID, but because we have our COA programming already having picked up, this, this budget basically brings that, brings that, bring, bring, brings that needed funding there to run the COA programming back up to where it was pre-COVID.
Type of expenses with that feeling?
So the professional and technical, the. Summer months. And during COVID, we. Of classes before, so we went.
Is that like instructor fees?
Those are instructor fees.
Okay. Okay. Tom?
The question. How we move forward together? So we're all in sync, so it's not a question.
Oh. So we.
And also.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And also the, the sound. On up in, in my way, and then. Also she can get 20 something years, so she, the new.
That's at primetime?
Is that the assistant salary of the assistant manager salary on the primetime one, 51?
That one will come down.
Okay.
That person is.
So I can just, yeah, and just a point of clarity on that, so conventional wisdom would, I would say that's exactly going to happen, but we won't know for sure whether that will happen, because both vacancies, we have to post internally within the union first. So we could conceivably have a union employee with the same amount of longevity, like, can come actually, oh, you know, to that amount, but it's impossible to say whether or not that will happen. So because once we post a vacancy, we have to post it internally first, and that's when we would know the answer to that question.
Is that like the chief retiring in August, is that something that we would be posting July 1st, or would that be?
It's already been posted.
Already?
On a plan.
Plus you have two facilities that close according to. Most people looking for places to call home, so you might see that salary stay exactly the same.
It's still in-house.
If no one in-house takes it, then we.
As, as the town administrators say, that if it gets posted to the union, if the.
Right, it would have.
So somebody who's already got 10 years, 15 years at the union comes and takes that position, it'll be a continuous run, so we, it would come in at the same rate.
Right, I understand that. I'm talking about bringing somebody in from the outside, like you were just saying.
Yeah, well, if these people have, have.
Wouldn't that be disrespectful, disrespectful to the people who we've built up to this wage level?
No.
No, not at all. I don't know, I, I have an aunt who was an activities director at a, at a, at a Mary Manor. She has a ton of experience. If we brought her in here to do this job, I mean, all of her experience lends itself to running some of these programs.
If they're in the union, it's a transfer in, just like Bob, just like Chief McDonald.
Yeah, but there wouldn't, so there would be some breakage though, because the way the clerical union contract is structured now, for employees hired after, I believe, time, 2020, there is a diff, there is a different wage schedule, so if we, so even bringing someone in at the same grade, which is a hypothetical, or the, or the hourly rate for the position itself and for that grade, like, is gonna be lower than it would be for an existing union employee, so.
Right, that's what I was, the point I was making.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, you're right.
You have other questions on primetime council and aging?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ferry?
Yes, sir.
Start on Highway? 422?
Yeah, it's, we're gonna give you your two minutes. I'm just gonna take three, we're good.
So keep in mind with the 42 and a 432 on the personnel, play around with the hours, but those hours add up, between the two accounts, add up to the 52 weeks. See fluctuations there, and they, they should be showing the respective contract obligations. Indication line that was put in there accidental, that was supposed to spend in the benefits that pays for the cell phones, so that's, that rate is there, it was taken out.
Oh, I'm sorry, geez, sorry.
You too?
No, no, no.
I just got paranoid for a moment.
Do you find out any issues in ordering equipment?
We're told an extremely large increase in up to and more of a two-year wait. So I, we're gonna have to be creative, but we'll see how we make out with the certification this fall and whatnot, but like to entertain possibly doing some used equipment. We've had, but we gotta be careful, don't bring a whole age of the fleet down. But yeah, that's, this is nonsense. Has a lot of nice experience on used vehicles.
A pocket truck. That was a possibility.
I'll ask the hard question again, 9% on 5105? That's your line, Tom.
Yep.
Just. I believe it's full salary being absorbed into the highway budget rather than being split.
Coming from.
432.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, okay, thank you. Perfect.
It's checked out.
It's fun.
Been a while since we played with these numbers here.
Yeah, it's just we decreased the split in 432.
4,700 is coming off of.
Yep.
Reduction of 4,700 on Stormwater.
Yes, it is right.
Yeah, right there, yeah.
Ask, how many full time employees do we have right now on the?
These eight full time positions under me, one's still open, one of those is still open.
Okay. And part time?
One.
Okay.
That's actually a very good question. We had one employee out on medical leave, superseded his benefits, so he was getting, he was not getting paid for a while, plus that position that's still open. So there should be a remainder in.
Okay.
This year's too, I don't know if you caught that.
Silly question, contractual disposal.
Not a silly question.
Who's that?
That's. That comes out of the catch basins when you clean it.
Okay.
Considered hazardous waste. If you keep it in your town, you own it. So it makes sense to have a third party clean the basins and he owns it.
Ah.
Okay.
There you go. Maybe it's the liability altogether is what you said.
Right.
Supplies in Stormwater, you think you'll be spending the rest of that this year?
I have been.
Oh, water.
I don't want to pull them out, no.
Okay. I know.
I see.
We're over on highway, so is that?
Yeah, but what what happens is we do the street cleaning and basin cleaning this time of year, and we find some immediate problems that's gonna be fixed. Could be supplies, that's what we're gonna do.
Okay.
So that's that's another one of them, like Lenny would pick up, you know, an expense late in the fiscal year because you need it a lot of part of the calendar year.
And like to the engineering, we just don't know if we're gonna need it or not.
Correct, I do plan on using a small job engineering this spring, meeting with the company tomorrow, actually.
Highway contracts are not done.
Correct.
It just got done or it's not done?
Not done. Just just started.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions on highway? Tom, only because I've been bouncing back and forth between the street cleaning and I don't know that anyone else has, but so just move over to street cleaning Stormwater now, which is 432. Main question I guess I've got in that would be with the plans that are on the lease.
For the street stripper?
Yeah.
There's an article, that's going towards to fund the third year.
Okay. How many years was that one?
Three, right? I believe three, yes.
Alibi out on that?
That's fucking check.
Is silence a good thing? Okay.
Anyone else have any questions on Storm, Street Cleaning, Stormwater?
No.
No.
I take it those decreases for the salary stuff is related to the some of the increases on the 422, is that?
Yes, and we also found a possible error. Now, the previous budgeting projection. Yes, so most of that, we're not gonna need, yes, so that should be should be surplus and available.
Okay.
Go on to Forestry 294.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Questions on the $263?
Nope.
Did I see there's an article for a truck for forestry?
Yes, there are two articles.
All right, we can talk about that when we get to the article.
Mm hmm.
Snow and Ice. 23. No, right, Tom?
No, we're not too far away from us right now.
My niece has got eight inches on Sunday, so.
Good for them.
Yeah, they can keep it.
It's a good place for it.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, I see a lot of these things were kind of over the 22, actuals were just about all over the.
Dave, this is the one, Snow and Ice is the one line, the one department that the state allows you to go over on.
Okay, yeah.
And then it becomes a charge in the next year's budget.
Okay.
So, yeah, so keeping 50 will help you guys manage keeping everything else under the levy limit.
Okay. That explains why there's no increase, even though.
Well, yeah, but clearly it's, we spend more.
Yeah.
I'd not to spend more money. Like, I'll keep it under 50 if you want.
So just says a clarification that 50 helps with the levy limit this year.
Yeah. Yeah. When Tom's praying for snow every night, yeah.
And adjust it as soon as we get enough snow.
All right, any any other questions on Snow and Ice?
No.
Go to Cemetery 491.
So this is another one, my question is just more directed to Mike. So our recommendation was before the contract was settled?
Yes.
Should we, how do we change that number, or is the public not gonna see that?
We don't, the contract for the. Is settled and just approved is only, I mean, I won't say only, but it's like, it's $200 shy, I believe of the $20,000.
Are you asking about the department request, Tom?
Yes, it was before. Yes, because we're asking for the 1907 and it's not.
Yeah, go ahead.
We did approve as a committee to go with the 247. And so is the public gonna see that in the town meetings? If so, we need to change that 1907.
Would 5310 be updated?
Yes. Wait, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna not do anything and let you know, do it because she hates when I mess with the sheets. We're good team.
That's just the, that's the contract for the next year's for molly.
It's three, three year contract, yes.
Three year. Ask.
Go for it.
What would the equipment repairs and maintenance be for cemeteries?
None, it could be gates.
Okay.
Could be stones, I know we don't own the stones, but they may be historic stone or something like that that we are interested in taking care of, but. Stone walls also.
Okay.
A lot of your barricades, when that gets considered fence.
Okay.
Exercise it, but we need to access two funds to make, you know, solve problems. So I think I think we came up with that number years ago, probably like eight years ago, and we've just been running with that.
1907?
No.
The 29.
52.
40, 40.
Okay.
Top line.
Yep.
Really looking for money, I mean, you could grab it there, it just gives us access to do some simple repairs.
So that's something that Ed knew off the top of his head, what was in, what that would have entailed, but I wouldn't have thought of gates and walls and.
Usually you don't have, someone that whacked it with a vehicle go away and you don't have that person.
Any other questions on cemetery?
No, sure.
All right. Did council on aging, so the bridge.
429.
29.
I'm going in the wrong direction. There you go.
Is this strictly lighting on the bridge?
Street light.
Yep, strictly lighting.
It's not TMLP. The lights.
No. Under it, under it is TMLP feeding Aggie School the cable line.
Any questions on the bridge?
Nope.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
Thank you.
Right, always easy.
Raggy R.
Jim would have liked to go last, but he's not.
I'm usually always last.
715, so we're right on.
Best for the.
I usually stand, but I think.
We'll pull a podium for you.
No, it's okay.
So first is 192. Actually, before we get into that, do you, just as a matter of discussions earlier about revenue, how are you seeing inspections and permits and?
So the interesting thing is permit counts are consistent, we do about 1,000 permits a year. It's the permit type that are not consistent with what we've been seeing. New construction is down, I've been forewarning of this for a few years, so it's finally here. So our revenues are still strong, they're covering departmental expenses, but they're not gonna add to local receipts like we've seen historically. So I think this trend is gonna last for a few years, I don't think it's gonna be transitory, I think we'll see this probably for two or three years minimum. We do have some subdivisions on the docket, they haven't gone through permitting yet, and with the escalation in in costs and the chain of, you know, it just. The supply chain is broken, so I see this lasting for a little while. So that's gonna hurt, obviously.
You have a rough idea of how much new construction declined?
Yeah, we were doing at our peak in excess of 40 houses a year, we're down to about 10 to 15. So, and I see that probably staying fairly consistent. We also had the water department issue from auditorium, which also had some factor on it. I don't know where that is, we're gonna hear about that fairly shortly, I suspect that it's gonna continue, but I don't know that for certain.
Okay, Mr. Holt said yes to this. Any other questions on that before we get into? No, all right, all right, 192.
5230, non-energy.
Yes.
Yes.
So this account is jointly overseen by the water selectman, county administrator and myself. So I don't authorize all bills for this 192, but I do have my hand in some of them, so I think we can answer any questions jointly.
Yes, so to that end, we actually recently have been overfunding the account. But the but the but the degree to what we were over overfunding the account, we needed to add in the second year of the library modular, which has a cost of $20,000. So like we reduced, we do. So pre adding in the modular, pre adding in the cost of the modular, we did reduce other line item before, and we actually brought it down to 5,640 compared to the prior appropriation. Then we add back in the $20,000 for the library modular. We are working, we're working in the select. We are working, we're working, in the selectmen are working very hard right now, together with the library trustees, to very, very diligently, you know, look into options to address our library building needs. We are very hopeful and optimistic that the, that the second year of funding the library modular will be the last, and we're working very diligently on that.
Hoping that if there is anything that goes beyond this next fiscal year, it would be on a monthly basis, not for an entire year.
Okay.
So we might have a holdover at the end of next fiscal year for a few months.
What do you mean by a holdover?
Meaning if we are unable to get another location completed by the end of the fiscal year, I'll have to remain in the modular until I can get that done.
So the company that's leasing it now, we can lease it on a monthly basis at the end of the year?
As, as you will know, we have been very, very mindful and diligent about our fiscal position. So we did try to go through on this budget and realize some efficiencies. We do, based, based on the current cleaning regimen, the, the increase in, in, in the custodial, does actually reflect the current, the current year expenses. And so, that means in this, so in this fiscal year, we are going to need to look at two other lines to, to make that whole. But we knew that going into this year anyways.
That's custodial and all, all town property?
Yes, except for the police station.
Right.
They have their own.
Right.
Okay.
What's the shared equipment line on that?
That is the shared, that is the shared copier, actually shared copiers between, we have a copier contract that is split between the planning board, the planning zoning wood office and the upper level of town hall. And that is a true cost of that contract.
That, that was, the $10,000 for last year, that was the first, that was the initial payment, right? I remember right?
First year.
Yeah, that was the first year that we were relying some on a prior article that we exhausted. And this is another area where the, to the real, the real, the real cost of, yeah, FY '22 cost is more than the 10 grand. So like we're absorbing that as well.
Any questions on public buildings?
Sure.
Nope.
Move on to inspections.
So everything's level funded, with the exception of contractual obligation for salary increases. I have found a suitable assistant who is doing very, very well. So there has been a surplus in that line in years past, that will now be used. It was tough to find someone that I could pass the ball to.
Have some demo this year?
Sorry?
Demo?
Yes, well, actually, might be a good time to talk about it. We actually have two right now that are out for bid. So we don't have enough funding in that line to do both of them, so I will be coming back to you to find the funding source for that. They, one of them was identified a couple of years ago. It was put off to deal with next door, 949. And then during the pandemic, I didn't think it was right to send someone a letter that I'm taking the house down, so I postponed it. However, both building, that building in particular has been broken into, squatters have been in it, so the police department is really, you know, obviously I don't want that to be a hindrance to police or fire.
Absolutely.
And then the other one is on a different location that I was not aware of, that was just, you know, presented itself. That's why we have two in the same year. I try not to do that.
I mean, it's okay, sometimes it's necessary.
And just for the two new members, when a house is demolished, the lien is put on the property. So the property is either acquired through tax title, or the lien is paid when the property sells.
Oh, okay.
So we get the money back, or we get the property.
Okay.
And we've been quite effective in the last dozen years of making sure we either get the money or the, or the property.
Okay.
Done well.
That's good.
See, so both these properties are out the bid, do we know?
Bid closes Thursday.
On both of them?
On both of them, yep. We did them jointly, in hopes that we could have one contractor bid on both of them.
Are the sites side by side?
No, different locations, but when a contractor mobilizes to demolish a building, if they can do two in one town, it helps. Yeah, we're hoping that happens.
Can we just schedule one for the end of June and one for the beginning of July and use the rest of this year's budget?
And what if I have an issue next year?
Well, then we'll worry about funding that one, but right now you have two knowns, that's an unknown.
Yeah.
They, I would like to do that, but both homes have been broken into since I boarded them up and secured them, so I need to deal with them now.
So am I correct, you said liens are placed on the properties, so when this money is recouped, the money goes back to your account?
No, it's not a revolving account.
Free cash.
Goes to free cash. My office has done well with helping free cash for me here.
Jim, do you have any, or maybe it's going to be in the, in the contract, but any idea what the lead time is right now for these companies?
No, we asked for a 45-day response time, so, yeah. So that will be whoever can, whoever the lowest qualified bidder is who can meet the deadline, is who we will probably grant it to.
Any questions on 241?
No.
Nope.
I mean, should be 243.
Yes? Oh, it's not in the one, okay, sorry.
Putting it out of one and putting it into another new line item, huh? Mary? Good?
I'm just going to keep going down the inspections, we'll, we'll get them all as, as we go. Same, same with gas.
Same with gas.
With gas. Cool.
No, revenues are decreased, as I said earlier, permit count's the same, so the inspections are the same. But we've, we've done a good job with our fee structuring that we can cover our expenses in the town, so we don't really rely on the taxpayers. The permit revenue covers the expenses in the office.
Okay.
You got an idea where we compare to other towns, fee-wise?
Yeah, we're right there, and actually we're higher in some areas. I am going to do a refinement and a couple of lines I want to correct or adjust, so I will be bringing that to the selectmen. The other thing is, you'll notice that weights and measures, 244, that was a recently applied department that I feel should be under my control and direction. I've just made them all agreed, so sort of picking up that ball mid-year. Way to approach that department, just like I did all the others. I'm going to make it revenue positive in the restructuring of my fees. However, there's one problem that I foresee, and that's, we don't have any of the equipment owned by the town of Dayton for the weights and measures sealer, so I'm going to have to acquire that equipment. Right now, because of my relationship with the town of Seacock, the town of Seacock has agreed to allow us to loan the equipment needed to do those inspections, but we're going to eventually have to buy it. And I haven't quite figured that out, how I want to do that yet. Obviously, it's not going to be operating because it's a one-time expense. The problem is, if I bring it to fall town meeting, it passed the September inspection dates, which most stuff, the expiry is in September. So I'm still working out the details. It's, it's a couple, three grand, so it's not a few hundred dollars. But as I said, I just recently acquired this, so I'm still trying to work on how I'm going to do all that.
My concern, though, is how readily available is that equipment? As we heard Barry allude to the fact that, you know, he's two years out, we heard the police chief.
Right.
Talk about the same with vehicles there. What, do you know, do you know what the status would be?
So when I contacted them last, there was a 30 to 60 day lead time on them, which would get them here before September, even if I bought them in mid-year. But I don't know that for certain. The good thing is, is that our relationship with Seacock will get us through the inspection cycle at the end of the year, need be. But I do want Dayton to have its own equipment.
Yeah, we should.
Especially if I'm going to adjust the fees to the businesses to pay, so we're cash positive, you know, we, we need to have our own equipment.
Going forward, what would be the, what kind of revenue would we be generating on that side?
It's not a lot. I mean, if you think about Dayton, we don't have a ton of, you know, gas stations, it's certainly not a Seacock or a Fall River.
Is that primarily, I don't, is that primarily what the weights and measures?
It's also scales for helicameras, anything, even propane tank filling stations are required to be inspected. Make sure that the weights are, are accurate. So I identified 29 devices in town that need to be inspected. So right now I'm trying to vet what the fee should be. I'm certainly going to offset the cost of the inspector, but I would like to be slightly positive, as I said. It's not a huge revenue maker, though. I'm talking about maybe $1,000, so. Certainly isn't, you know, in totality, though, you know, by permits, it's, it all, it all helps.
Yes. Yeah, and even from that standpoint, if the equipment costs $3,000, we'll recoup it in three years.
Recoup it in two or three years, right, exactly. And that's how I tried to run my department historically, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Draggyar on plumbing, gas, electric, or weights and measures?
Nope.
Thank you, Jim. Coordinator is 549.
And this has been proposed on a, actually, it's. So there is a proposed increase, can the, can the ADA budget, uh, 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 so legally required of, for the legally required auxiliary aids here, that's an increase of 500. But that increase is also offset by the, by decreases in office supplies and professional technical as well.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Gale.
Has the department request been changed?
The, yeah, just really doing the math as well.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Gale. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Yeah, no, I don't, either submit. So, yeah, my recommendations, there is the off.
Oh, you brought it up.
Yeah, there is the offset, I'm sorry.
So that's what you were requesting.
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry. And then the board of selectmen's recommendations include the same offset.
The department's still requesting the, the 25, though, that hasn't been changed?
The, so like we, so we do like to stick to the original departmental request to show transparency, but I can tell you that the ADA coordinator and the commissioner on disability, they have approved the.
Change.
Yeah, the change.
Is that, any chance that we know, is that Mr. Gale?
There's someone on the phone, Jonathan, is that you or?
Yes, it is. I'm here.
Is there someone on the phone?
Yes, Jonathan is.
It says 774, oh boy, 872.
0741.
Need the extra to read the screen for me.
Yeah, I wanted to give him the opportunity to talk.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? Send a message to Michael Murray.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Holt?
As I look at this budget, and we spoke about stipends. I do not see a 2% increase.
But none of you can hear me, and I can hear all of you.
On disabilities, stipend, I was just wondering. Make a consistency by, it was an increase on this stipend.
So, so when that's a very, yeah, that, that question makes sense. So like for, for right now, so how I've interpreted, how I've interpreted these votes, is that the board of selectmen have approved the stipend increase for the elected officials. So but based on the, the, the discussion that's been ongoing with the harbor master too, one thing would inform the other there, so if there's a, so if there's a 2% increase on the harbor master stipend that is approved, so, so nothing has been approved yet, so the same logic would continue over. I was just waiting for some guidance from the selectmen about how they wanted to deal with the harbor master, because one thing kind of informs the other, if that makes sense.
Yes, it's just that the harbor master's going retroactive.
Well, the, so that's what's been proposed, that, as we know, doesn't necessarily need to be what is actually approved.
Yeah, he's proposed something to you guys, now it's up to you to determine what you.
We're going to discuss that tomorrow, and I get the impression, I can't speak for the board, but we weren't supporting the, going retroactive on the stipend. But we did support, and as I pointed out before, Mr. Karen wasn't on the board when we discussed this, but a stipend increase of 2% for elected as well as.
Okay, yeah, you had to know that.
Was everybody, yes.
That makes sense.
With the board of selectmen, we asked that, we didn't get it.
Mr. Draggyar.
I have a question, I'm going to be the elephant in the room, okay? These are cost of living adjustments. If you sit on a board committee and you're paid a stipend, that is just to show recognition for the time that you put in. It doesn't mean you don't deserve a raise. To me, if you think that a board committee needs to be paid more because of putting more time in, well, that's a difference. Like somebody who comes here from a 40-hour weekend.
Some are.
Totally agree.
Right, right. Five years.
But that's what we're talking about, the 2% grant, you're saying that's a cost of living adjustment.
But, yeah, I, I would agree with you, Jim, and, and I think that, that that's really what the stipend policy needs to be looked at, which is establish what your stipend is for a period of five years or 10 years, and then go revisit that again and see if those rolls are due for an increase based upon the amount of work put into it, the change in responsibilities, things of that nature. But I, I would agree, I mean, respectfully, I would decline my 2% increase as a finest committee member, because I honestly look at this more as, I'm a towns person who is just as impacted by this budget as anybody else, and I want to represent, that's it.
I agree too. I do not believe stipends, stipends are a. I do not believe stipends, stipends are a, something you go into because you have the desire to go beyond, to give a little bit more. And they are not part of your salary.
That is Jonathan. So he actually just, he actually texted me that he, that none of you can hear me, and I can hear all of you. But our audio is working fine.
Needs to unmute. There's a button somewhere at his end I'll bet you that he's got to press.
So, yeah, one of the things, so he just mentioned to me, he didn't get a Zoom link for the meeting, and because of that, he's been having difficulties logging on. So I think that explains everything.
To unmute, and I am unmuted.
You're on, Jonathan?
We did.
Hello?
Jonathan?
Jonathan?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I don't know what happened. I didn't change anything at all. But I'm sorry about that. I was trying like crazy. And you're fading in and out, just so you know.
That's probably me.
So what can I answer for you gentlemen?
We actually didn't have any questions for your, for your department. You were good.
Okay. Well, that's really nice to know, and I appreciate that. If there's anything I can't answer, let me know. I'm happy to do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I mean, the only question I have before wrapping up that part of it, you had mentioned elected, so I know moderator gets a stipend. What other elected positions get a stipend?
Lenny Wood.
Lenny Wood?
No, they're not elected.
That's, it's elected and appointed. It would be elected and appointed boards.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just say my opinion's the same as Mr. Aggar, that, I mean, one of the reasons that we proposed these and actually knocked them back a few years, probably five years ago, was because, I mean, my opinion, you know, people should want to do this and it shouldn't have to be reflected in the time. Like I said, I know we all get, the amount of time that we put into it, it is under minimum wage, and that's fine. It's not what I'm here for.
I mean, I wasn't expecting to get paid, so.
There you go. There you go. But that's partly a discussion for another, another night. So Councilman, we actually passed, we pushed through this, right? Any other questions on ADA?
No.
I didn't think so. Okay. So Town Administrator?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I believe, there are. That's why I'm pulling up, sorry. So the, so they're making, so the, I do, I do have a 2% increase. What's that, is that a 2.08 percent?
2.0, yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, I have a $2,500 increase, I'm sorry, which comes out to a 2.08. Maybe you know. But I think there's some automatic actual salary going into FY22. The executive assistants' salary is split between the town administrator's budget and the Board of Selectmen budget. So the same logic that I mentioned earlier applies here on that. We did, based on a few factors, cut out the intern, the intern budget this year. We've been, like, we, as we know, we still have the ability to utilize interns. Or, you know, respectfully, we don't have to pay them. I actually seek to continue doing that, especially through Bridgewater State, like in other, I mean, in other colleges and universities as well. But we, I did propose, I did propose cutting out that. You'll see for the second year in a row that there is a second vacation buyback provision that is actually in my contract. But frankly, I would, you know, like, also mindful of the budget position. And I'm a big believer of, you know, utilizing, utilizing vacation benefits and managing them. So I am proposing I might defund that as well. The, the, the vehicle and education stipend, I have a, I have a town cellphone, so the $2,200 is for the, the vehicle and education, the vehicle and education stipend as well. I did propose just restructuring the expense lines to, to act, to actual figures that, you know, like, outlined in projected going into next year with those offsets, with the offset. A big part of the offset from travel, for example, going into professional technical, and that's really.
What's the projects that the interns do this past year?
The, so what the, we are intern, we are intern from Mass Maritime who work under the directions of the emergency preparedness, of the emergency preparedness committee, and help to. Use an emergency response plan. Oh, yeah, like, they have been valuable and worthwhile. So what I, so I also know from my own experience, well, that, oh, you know, that I did internships for, oh, yeah, for college, out of college credit and experience. Oh, like, and that was really the value. Like, there was no monetary value. I mean, not like I interned and I worked my way up and, you know, I just. Big believer in that as well.
Yeah. Any questions on the Administrator's budget?
No.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, believe it or not, that is all for tonight. Before, before we wrap up, I just wanted to welcome Mr. Karen and congratulate you. All for us, we're back 6 o'clock on Thursday. Be a little, little bit quicker than tonight, I would say. But that's all for us. I don't know, do you guys have to adjourn before us or after us, or? Let's do adjourn.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Close. We return.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, I'm John.